To our live viewers, we are waiting a few moments for, to establish a quorum. We just wanted to let you know, we will be in momentarily. I will call to order the P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning Local Planning Agency meeting for August 7th. I'll do a quick roll call because we are, our chairperson is on the phone, but he is not currently present with us. So Chairperson Kaku Ma.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Michael Franty. Board Member Rachel Hood.
Present.
Board Member David Makin.
Present.
Board Member Louis Halal.
Present.
Beautiful. And just to note, we did start this at 5:48. All right, we can stand for a moment of silence and the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Thug, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Since we do not have a chairperson right now, we do actually have to hold an election for a pro temp chair for this meeting. So that pretty much means that we have to have someone be nominated to be chair to run this meeting for us, just for this one meeting, not for the rest. But I would like to open up that nomination for someone that is willing to guide us through this meeting tonight.
Yes, I nominate you.
Is David Makin nominating Ms. Hood?
Yes.
You accept the nomination? Is there any other nominations? All right, we can, I guess we can do just kind of like a all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed to the nomination? Take it on over. I will be here to help if any need.
All right. Do we have any agenda changes?
I don't know.
There are no awards and presentations, so we'll move on to the informational agenda. Is there any public input at this time? Yes.
Gina Schaefer of the Winter Springs Village. Two points that I just want to bring up, and because this is a public hearing, I've said it at commission meetings, but I want you all to know too. The fencing that is put up at these locations when the commission has approved new development. Across from the Wind Dixie, they tore everything down and they did not put up the silt fences because there's a problem between 434 being a state road and whatever. However, in my opinion, they should have had to get the silt fence before getting the clear, to clear the land. And the reason being, I bring this up because there's two groups of people that are coming here to ask for their things to be put ahead. The reason I'm saying this is, the reason the city did this, and I pushed for it, was when the lake was being built and there was a hurricane, they did not secure that location. And we asked the city to put up the fencing after that. Went to the commission, asked them for that because the people left debris, which could fly anywhere where you're told to bring in your patio furniture, and they left like job site stuff there. So I am asking that you all know that moving forward, that any project has the fencing up before they clear the land or whatever. And whatever the problem with the state saying it's okay to clear that property, because that's the one that's down by, the property that is down by the Wind Dixie across the street from there. That's why I'm bringing this up to you all. And also, I am talking about this because the pond that is on the property for the school is a private property pond. And I understand this, and I was told this. However, that, that was never dredged, ever. And if you notice that the city is dredging lakes and whatever. And my development is the Winter Springs Village, and we actually did have flooding. And there are people in my development now that have bought flood insurance because we did get flooded during Ian. And that pond was in respect, it was being utilized during that hurricane because it existed during Ian. So I'm just bringing that to your attention, and I thought this is the best time to tell you before you vote on anything or whatever. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any additional public input? All right, we'll close out that item and move on to the consent, consent agenda. Item 300, approval of the Thursday, June 25th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Board Local Planning Agency Regular Meeting Minutes.
I make a motion to approve the Thursday, June 5th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Board Minutes.
All right. I'll do a quick roll call. Chairperson Ma.
Aye.
Board Member Hood.
Aye.
Board Member Makin.
Aye.
Board Member Halal.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the public hearings agenda, item 400. The Learning Experience State Road 434 at 419 and Michael Blake Boulevard, Conditional Use Application, Site Plan, Final Engineering, Aesthetic Review Waivers and Development Agreement. Is there a presentation from staff?
Yes. Hi, again, John Ravens, Senior Planner. So this will be for the Learning Experience Daycare. Let's see. There we are. All right. Learning Experience Daycare, this is one of the projects that's going in at the Seahawk Cove development. This is actually going to be going at the end. See, it's, I am hitting the right button, you know? Please stand by. Oh, yes, there we go. So as you can see, the X is actually, oh. The X is marking the property where, or the part of the property where the daycare is going to be going. Again, at the east northeast intersection of 434 Michael Blake Boulevard, in that bottom right corner. They had the pre-application meeting back in April of last year, then their site plan in October this year. And then they have submitted three different waivers, including one for their setback waiver in order to move the property further back, another one for the building placement to reorient it so that instead of the front facade facing SR 434, it's going to be facing inward. And also a conditional use application since code requires a conditional use for a daycare within the town center. Architectural review, the development agreement application, and then there was one final street waiver for the streetscape. As the DOT would have preferred that they keep everything as far as the layout and the organization for the landscaping strip next to SR 434, the five foot sidewalk, and then the additional landscaping beyond that. So if I go to my next slide, this will be the layout for the structure. I made sure to include the landscape, landscaping here to show you what that streetscape change is going to look like. They're already planning, planning to plant trees there, the landscape, then you have the sidewalk, then there's going to be more trees, shrubs between the sidewalk and the building. And that's the front facade there on the right, which will be facing the parking lot. This was designed in such a way to assist with any potential traffic issues with pickup and drop off and to keep any traffic from backing up along SR 434. All right, and, oh yes. And so here you can see the, this is the, this is going to be the front facade area. This will be the side, the back side that is facing SR 434, and then our two sides here. All right. And our proposed conditions for this are going to include execution of the development agreement. This will be, I believe, a development agreement amendment to what has already been agreed, agreed to for Seahawk Cove. Illuminated wall signage above the entrance to the building and facing Lot 4 of the Blake Commons Platte must be turned off when the daycare facility is closed. So if I go back, this is, again, that is illuminated signage up there with the Learning Experience and their elephant mascot. So that will be shut off during, or after, sorry, after opening hours for the daycare. So that way the light is not shining onto what's going to be those new townhomes coming in. All the grass on the property is going to be Bahia, no St. Augustine grass or grass types with low drought tolerance permitted. And an economic impact analysis required for City Commission Public Hearing. We're still working with NV5 to get that, so we're anticipating having that, being able to review it prior to City Commission. And with that, I will, hmm, what? I hadn't any questions, so I, but that seems to be. Oh, ah, there we go. All right. So with that said, I will take any questions that the board has.
I had one question on the, the mass deliveries, just based on some personal experience with daycares. I was curious, looking at the parking lot, do we feel confident that, you know, they're going to have food deliveries and potentially other deliveries? Do we feel confident that the level of vehicle required to deliver that will be able to navigate the parking lot?
It should be able to. Again, they had to submit the transportation impact analysis, and part of the requirements with that is to ensure that any kind of like emergency vehicles can get in, especially fire trucks, and can get in and turn around. So if they can do it, it should be possible for any delivery trucks to be able to do the same. The applicants are all.
I do have a few questions if, if, once it becomes my turn.
I, I have a quick question in regards to the environmental evaluation. It looks like there was a report that was submitted. Let me see, I'm just looking at the, on the online stuff. From NV5, that was a excuse me. Basically a Phase 1 environmental site assessment that did go a little bit further than normal and evaluated the site for any wetland occurrences. And they, they didn't cite any issues there, but this type of report didn't address wildlife habitat. So I'm just wondering if there was some other report that was done?
No, the.
To check that box?
All right, sorry, we do have representatives from NV5 present.
Good evening, Terrell Lynn Roll, Director of Community Development. We do have the applicant's representative here. But also this parcel is on the Seahawk Cove site that was approved previously. And NV5 is also their applicant consultant, and they conducted that same study. And they didn't find anything regarding wildlife, et cetera, so.
Do you know when that was done?
Good evening, my name is Jason Mahoney, I'm with NV5. We did, like Terrell Lynn said, we did the environmental report for the overall Lot 4 parcel, that's everything between Michael Blake Boulevard, 434, the Dreambinders, Seminole Crossing Townhomes. The environmental report was issued in mid-2024, and no, there were no, no, no environmental findings.
Can that get, and is that report comprehensive in that it addressed not just wetlands but wildlife as well?
Yes, it did.
Okay, can that get into the package somehow? Just to complete the file? I'm not sure if it was just an oversight, if just the Phase 1 was submitted, or if that was.
The environmental report that was included in the packet is the one that we reviewed as part of this case.
Okay. Sorry, I apologize, I'm just looking on my phone. So that's the report dated September 2024?
I don't have the report in front of me.
Yeah. Well, actually, let me rephrase that. Yeah, September 16th, 2024. Phase 1. I mean, honestly, I certainly don't anticipate there to be any wildlife issues there, but we just need it documented if it's.
Well, that report, that report would be in the package for the approval of Seahawk Cove from last month.
So, okay, well, that's Seahawk Cove, and the property hasn't been cleared or anything yet, so this is still, you know, there's natural environment there. So it should be in this file, right? I don't know how you guys administratively handle that kind of stuff, but I guess if, my concern is just simply if there's an issue in the future and somebody goes to the project file for this project, are they going to know that that information is documented in the Seahawk Cove file? That's all.
Or member Minkin, we will add that to the packet for City Commission.
Yeah.
The catalyst group for Seahawk Cove will be clearing the lot, not the Learning Experience. So again, it's an oversight that it's not included, the wildlife report, but however, it's already approved to be cleared with that report attached to Seahawk Cove.
Sounds good.
Chairperson Ma, I think we're ready for your questions.
Thank you, and I just want to apologize for not being there in person. I'm recovering from my other ankle surgery, so I've, I've been cooped up in the house for for about a week and a half now, but so. I reviewed the packet, I do have a few questions on this agenda item. What are the hours of operation for the site?
6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay, are, is there any lighting in the, in the parking area?
Yes, there is.
Was there a, a lighting sheet in the, in the submittal package?
No, I don't recall seeing a lighting plan.
So is the lighting detailed anywhere then?
Hold on, we're, someone from NV5 will be answering that question.
Apologize. We believe the lighting plan is in the building permit package with the lighting details.
Okay. Okay, but there is lighting in the, in the parking lot itself?
That's correct.
Okay. Does this facility include, well, is the age range up to pre-K?
Yes. I'm speaking for the applicant, there's an after-school program that goes up to eight years old.
Okay. A question for, for staff, please. What would be needed if sometime in the future they wanted to change this into a, a school? What would, what would the process be for them to do that if this, if they wanted to do K through 5 or something like that?
If they wanted to change over to, to a school, I believe that would require another conditional use permit since it would be changing the use from a daycare to an educational institution.
Okay, so that would have to go in front of P&amp;Z as well as City Council, or City Commission, rather?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so my concern with that line of question is I've seen a number of daycares that have recently been converting to charter schools. And while I do not have any issue with that, I, this particular site, I would have issues with queuing and circulation if that were to happen. Would there be appetite to have a condition added to the development agreement that would prohibit this site from converting into a, into a educational school?
If it were to convert to a future school in the future, that applicant, whoever it was, would have to come back to this board and to City Commission and demonstrate that that would work.
Yes, and then that would be up to this commission, and, well, up to this board and to the SIG mission to decide whether that would be in allowable and desired use for that facility going forward.
Okay, well, I would be, I would only be approving this if we would prohibit, prohibit a school use on this site. That, that, that would not, that would not preclude you from move, the applicant from moving forward to open up a daycare on this, at this location?
Can we confirm if that would?
I'm, I'm looking, but I'm not seeing that at the moment, I'll, I'll keep looking.
No, that's, I just wanted to confirm if that would in fact trigger it to come back in front of the, the board.
John, is a school of permitted use in the town center anyhow? We've never even contemplated doing one, so I.
It's something I'd have, I'd have to look at or.
Maybe, maybe a prohibited use altogether.
Yes, it's certainly possible. In my past experience in other municipalities, typically a school was a conditional use in most districts.
Okay.
I'm looking it up right now.
I, I did find in the town center, so schools are listed as a separate use from daycares, and it does require a conditional use. So as stated, if there was a desire to change it to a school, an additional conditional use would be required. A conditional use permit.
Chairperson Ma, does that satisfy your proposal?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Ike.
You're welcome.
That's all of my questions.
Thank you, sir.
All right, are there any additional questions, comments?
Just, just one question, is, is there going to be like a bus? Or is it just drop off? Would there be transportation provided for the?
Currently, there are no plans for a bus, and if there were to be anything, it perhaps would be a van.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion?
We have to open it up for, for a public comment.
I'll open it up for a public comment.
And if, I don't know if the applicant has any additional presentation there.
Thank you. No presentation from the applicant, any public comment at this time?
I live on, right off of Michael Blake, Gina Schaefer, Winter Springs Village. And I understand what they're saying about the school because that would put a lot of traffic on Michael Blake, which we do have a light there now, but it will impact going forward, and this is for posterity, for the commission to listen to or whatever. But I agree that there should not be a school on that property because that is going to, I mean, the, the high school already cuts through on Michael Blake during six o'clock, if the school, the daycare opens at six o'clock, they are coming there at seven, and you have Starbucks also, plus you're going to have another coffee shop. So I'm, I'm only saying that I understand with the school, it would be a different scenario of traffic on there. It is only really, there's one turn lane and there's two other lanes, that's all it is. So it's like a two-lane road. Thank you.
May we respond? I just wanted to also point out that there is a traffic impact analysis in the approval package for the daycare facility, which demonstrates that all traffic conditions will be met for the daycare facility. This is Rick Kerper on behalf of the applicant Learning Experience.
So the Learning Experience is a national childcare center. It's, it's part of a, it's part of 450-plus childcare centers under the Learning Experience flag. At this point in time, of the 450 centers that they have up and running, zero have been ever converted to a school. We have no intention of converting it to a school.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? This time I will entertain a motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Learning Experience on State Road 434 and Mitchell Blake Boulevard, conditional use application.
I'll second the motion.
Let's be specific, so are you, you said conditional use, but we're also including the site plan?
Yes, sorry.
Aesthetic review waivers and development agreement, and does that also include this conditions of approval recommended by staff?
Yes, conditions also recommended by staff earlier on the previous slide.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, yeah, we'll do a quick roll call. Chairperson Ma.
Aye.
Board member Hood?
Aye.
Board member Minkin?
Aye.
Board member Halal?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item 401, the Wawa at Winter Springs Marketplace, State Road 434 and Tuscaloosa Road, conditional use application, site plan and final engineering, aesthetic review waivers and development agreement. Is there a presentation by staff?
Yes, for the record again, Terrell Lynn Roll, Director of Community Development. Just wanted to introduce a newer team member, Ms. Janelle Garnett. She will be presenting the Wawa application. Also, just to note, the item 402 is related, so when the applicant comes after staff presentation, they may be speaking to this and the subsequent agenda item.
Hello, good evening, just as Terrell Lynn said, I, my name is Janelle Garnett, and I am a senior planner, started not too long ago myself. The current project is Wawa at the Winter Springs Marketplace, which is the property located next to the Fifth Third Bank, which is on the corner of State Road 434 and Tuscaloosa. And the proposal is to develop a Wawa, which is a gas station convenience store. And the convenience store is 4,736 square feet, and the gas canopy is 5,903 square feet. That contains six main pumps, stations with accumulative 12 gas dispensers. And of course, it's located in the Town Center District, T5. An applicant has submitted a final engineering site plan application, aesthetic review application, a conditional use application, and a development agreement application, as well as three waiver applications, which I will get into as we proceed. The property is 1.22 acres and is located right there on the corner of the subject property in that light blue color. At the pre-application meeting was held on May 6th, 2025, and June 9th of 2025, the site plan application, aesthetic waiver, one of the waiver applications, which was for the signs, the ground monument proposed signs, and the conditional use application for the gas station portion because it does require still a conditional use application, even though the gas station convenience store was permitted as a conditional use per the recent adoption of ordinance number 2025-09 in May of 2025. Just to be clear about that, July 18th, 2025, the waiver applications for the setback of the actual store, convenience store portion of the project. And then there was a waiver application for the streetscape. And that came in on July 18th and July 23rd. The development agreement application came in, and on July 29th, the public notice letters and signage were sent out, and applicant currently is Corey Stittler, Sittler, sorry, from Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. is Corey Stittler, Sittler, sorry, from Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. And just to break down this site and the layout, I did point out the two proposed ground monument signs, and the picture indicates what those will, are proposed to look like. They do meet the square footage and the 12 feet in height, but there is two of them, and the red indicates where their, the proposed location of where they're wanting to go. Just to keep in mind, there are already three multi, multiple tenant ground monument signs along State Road 434, and there is also one multi-tenant, multiple tenant sign that is existing along Tuscaloosa near the driveway access point. You can, I should have highlighted, but it is, it'll be right across from, from the access easement here. Yeah. So that will create, if it is approved, six ground monument signs with four of them being along State Road 434. Also, we have here where the proposed building is, location is, and the gas canopy is proposed to be located here. There will be one pedestrian access to the store from the Tuscaloosa side, but due to safety concerns, there will not be one is currently proposed coming from 434 because there's two stop signs here on the property, but if they go across, it would go across all this traffic from the gas station portion. And moving forward, here are the elevations along with the material, exterior material finish for the proposed Wawa. So it's the standard Wawa aesthetic, and this is the front currently here, and this would be the rear, and this enclosed portion would be where the dumpsters are located. And here we have the sides as well, left and right, and here are the elevations for the gas canopy and the aesthetics. So after analysis, staff had recommended that the planning and zoning board deny the conditional use, site plans, aesthetics and development agreement, as it does not meet any of the goals found in Goal Two of the Town Center of the Comprehensive Plan due to the following. I will do a quick, quick highlight of the eight that have been written, looked at. So one of the things, the convenience store placement is required to be oriented close to East State Road 434, Tuscaloosa Road. And just to bring to your attention, in the adoption of the ordinance that took place in May of 2025, one of the permitted, as a permitted use, it does say directly, a corner store neighborhood convenience with gas pumps was permitted, but the store must be located at the corner of an arterial intersection, and just the State Road 434, there's supposed to be storefrontage, to have a continuous storefrontage along State Road 434. As in the marketplace, you do see that all of the, the Fifth Third Bank, the Chipotle, and the, the dental, they're, they're close to the State Road 434. Now, when the marketplace, the Winter Springs of Marketplace went through this process, they did have a waiver for some of the stores and their setbacks, but the waiver with the largest setback that was approved was 67.5 feet, and that was Fifth Third Bank, and the justification at the time was because of the streetscape requirements. So that's where that was placed. And then there were also their parking that's in front of there, and then they have a drive-through as well. So that's the justification, but the remaining stores along that State Road 434, they're about 60 feet, 62. So also, with that said, the proposed convenience store setback is 182 feet from State Road 434, and also 98 feet from the Tusco, Willa Road, which exceeds the required setback, and not the intention of, first of all, the ordinance, but as well the Goal Two of the Town Center of the Comprehensive Plan. The risk setback is required to be 15 feet and zero is proposed as well. Also, the proposed design and color of the building and gas canopy are not consistent with the Winter Springs Marketplace, therefore not compatible with the immediate surrounding area of the town center, as well as the single-tenant monument signs that are required to be consistent in materials with the architecture of the proposed building. So the justification from the applicant for the ground monument signs to be not compatible with the proposed building exterior finish is due to the fact they are trying to, they did say trying to be compatible with the three other ground monument signs or, or the monument signs that are located on Tuscaloosa and 434. Also, the traffic impact analysis is required to determine the impact and on and adherence to the Town Center goals, but per the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. However, as of the date of this report, the transportation review or traffic impact analysis has not been addressed. It has been submitted as of July 31 and to, to be reviewed, but currently it hasn't been approved quite as of yet. And the last two things, there's no hardship present on the subject site to meet all the relevant standards for the town center. There might be, have to be some modifications or adjustments, but from what was reviewed, it could pop, be possible, it would be more compatible with Town Center standards. And as stated before, it's not consistent with the use of a corner store neighborhood, just due to the fact the building is placed 182 feet behind the corner. So in the event that the site plan is recommended for approval, staff recommends that is contingent upon and not effective until the related additional parking project application is approved, which is item 402. And with regard to the aesthetics, staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions: the, the adoption of the design associated with the newer designs demonstrated in other Wawa locations and color to be consistent with the existing structures located at the Winter Springs Marketplace, which you will see in one moment. And with regards to the waiver, staff recommends denial of waiver, of the setback waiver, but approval of the streetscape, which only the portion, the southern portion nearest to the Tuscaloosa access is 22 feet, but the remaining streetscape does meet the 27 feet width. So there would be no conditions with that. And then the signs subject to the following conditions, which is the one, one ground sign to be located at the intersection of State Road 434 and Tuscaloosa Road, and the one ground sign to be consistent in materials with the architecture of the proposed building. And with regard to traffic impact analysis, staff recommends the project meet the conditions, if any, with the outcome of the completed review, since as of today, it is not currently completed. And just additional analysis, of course, I keep referring to the Town Center and Comprehensive Plan of it not being consistent with that in regards to the aesthetics, the setback waiver, just for, it's supposed to have pedestrian access, it's supposed to be a fluid walk for, from on Tuscalo, I'm sorry, on the State Road 434, and the buildings on both sides are at the close proximity to State 434, State Road 434, but with it being 182 feet, that breaks up the consistency and the desired look for the Town Center of walkability. And just to go over object 2.2, the Neo Traditional, once again, that is reference to the aesthetics, and also Policy 22.1 Neo Traditional characteristics, which encourage a mixed-use, higher-density intensity. And with that said, I have shown, sorry, in courtesy meetings, because we've had a few courtesy meetings of other Wawa locations, I understand they're in Kentucky and Indiana and Virginia, and the conceptual rendering is presented, but I just want to show the differentiation of how this design actually is more consistent with the buildings within the Winter Springs Marketplace structures. So you see the Aldi and the Fifth Third Bank and Chipotle and the Fitness and the Dental, just for aesthetic-wise, how this flows better than what has been presented today. So with that said, that concludes staff presentation. Is there any questions? Oh, and applicant is here.
Does the applicant have a presentation they would like?
Yes, Ryan Stall Equinox Development, 630 South Maitland Avenue, Maitland, Florida. Thank you. Thank you, Janelle. This has been a long road to get to this one. As we were going through some notes, we realized that we put this property under contract eight years ago, and if you go back eight years ago, you'll remember Pinch a Penny, that was occupying a closed-down gas station at the time. So, and I'll add to that, the reason we were brought to the site and created what is Winter Springs Marketplace today was due to Wawa, and they had approached us about looking at the site, and at that time, the current seller did not want to sell off the corner. At this, at that time, too, the convenience store was not viewed as a positive beginning to this development, and so we convinced the seller to sell everything else around the property and retain the corner parcel, which we eventually purchased. So the, and I share that story to say that typically you don't have development that goes backwards and have your corner parcel as a leftover piece. That's very atypical, but what that has provided along the way is basically what, and, and I will tell you, the, the reference to Winter Springs Marketplace as being the marketplace has been one that we've actually appreciated. I feel like the community has kind of taken that concept and that word and have understood what it actually has become. Started with grocery, with Aldi, as you add in Fitness, there's another component. I mean, yes, Dollar Tree, Heartland Dental and Chipotle are, are valuable, but once you start adding the bank, you start realizing the different components which make up a marketplace, which is grocery, banking, fitness, and then ideally now would be convenience. And that becomes a, a, a true marketplace, if you will, where people come and gather. And yes, it is part of the Town Center, and we don't disagree with any of the Janelle's and staff's comments of, of what they put out, but we also look at it as it kind of completes this corner and allows that one location where people can arrive. They'll probably end up being here multiple times a week, serving multiple purposes of what their daily lives involve. So I would like to actually specifically thank staff on this one. This has not been an easy one, and as you saw the complications with the setbacks and with the buildings. And with that, Wawa themselves have, have gone a little bit out of their way to trying to make this work. The building prototype that you see is unlike any that exists in central Florida, and it was specifically designed for this site. The height of the building was also done, each building along the way, because I was involved with every single one. We made sure we tried to hit that two-story design component, and that was also the case here with Wawa, as well as not only the two-story architectural feature, but also just the overall height. I would say also fast forward to, to where we are, the, 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 the last eight years, the, the neighbors have been, gotten to know a lot of them, but the, to have our neighborhood meeting a couple weeks ago and to walk out of there with what seemed to be support, I don't want, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth and say unanimous support, but nobody basically was, was yelling, nobody was, I mean, having any outward voices against what we were doing. It was more inquisitive questions, and we appreciated everybody who showed up, especially staff. I think, we feel like we've started in the beginning on this process, being open-minded and listening. If you guys have watched in the meetings the last eight years, I don't know how many times I've been up here, but more than that, to approach what the problems were, and specifically, Robert's Family Way was probably the main concern that we wanted to make sure we addressed. What exists out there right now was actually what was designed and agreed to way back. In fact, what is out there right now is designed by their engineer that we installed. And just through time and as traffic progresses, I mean, water finds its way, so people would start to kind of figure out their way around it to, to avoid it. So we went out there and stood there for 30 minutes, and what you guys see on this plan up there is what was agreed to, and also again, appreciate staff for supporting this. I don't want to say it's a little unique. It's probably very simplistic if you look at it, but when we were done, we, with the members of Robert's Family Way, the Association, all sat around and took a picture of it and hand shook and walked away. And so, again, trying to cover two items tonight on, on one presentation here. As you guys probably have in your packet, you'll see how it really avoids people cutting through. We were standing there, like I said, in those 30 minutes, there was three people who cut, I mean, the wrong way and were driving across the curb, so we get that, and we feel like out of this design, not only cleans up the safety aspect, but also provides a remedy for those residents to the west. And then lastly, the other question you might wonder about, are the parking spaces on the retention pond? Yep, right there. Those are needed because of Wawa needs a minimum amount of parking space, it's not only for its customers, but also for its associates, and so that would actually be considered primarily for the associate parking. That would free up the parking around the Wawa itself. And again, a little atypical, but since we developed the original shopping center overall design, we knew the capabilities of doing something like that. So I'll leave it at that. Again, appreciate the support along the way, and a lot of multiple questions. Corey from Kimley Horn is here. Do you want to address anything?
Hey, good evening. Corey Sittler with Kimley Horn and Associates, engineering record for the project and the listed applicant, I guess. So just, just some, some challenges as, as we looked at the site layout for this, because obviously, you know, we understood the, the intent of, of the Town Center code in this area and the intent of, of trying to get that building massing closer to 434. And what you'll see with the site geometry is, it's, it is a little atypical. It seems to be the common theme with, with this development, or this project specifically, is it's unique. So the triangular shape of, of the, of the parcel kind of forces, I mean, I say forces, but it, it lends itself to better circulation if the building is set further back, and I mean that by circulation from operations, think loading for the, for the food, dumpsters. I mean, we all have that setback behind the building, as most Wawas are, and we actually laid this site out with the building set further forward, and what we found was the, the challenges, the challenges with getting the parking that we needed. As you can see, even with this concept, we still need 10 additional spaces for, for what we need for, for a Wawa of this size. So part, meeting the parking was, was definitely a challenge here, as well of, as well as just the site circulation. So just thinking through visually, if you push the, if you push the Wawa, the main building all the way to the front, what you then have is all the back of house is on the south side, and if you have the canopy further south from that, then you have loading, the dumpster areas set between the parking areas and the canopy and the building. So people are essentially having to walk through loading areas, through dumpster areas, to get to the building from the fueling canopy and from parking. So from an operational standpoint, that's not. So from an operational standpoint, that's not, you know, ideal for Wawa either. And then one other point I'll mention, just for gas stations and fueling stations in general, is as a customer, one of the main draws to a gas station is the fueling price and also how many cars are currently there. So if I'm a customer driving by this site, you know, obviously, if there's a lot of cars, I may, you know, skip another day and then try to go in another off time, but if it's, you know, if it's rather empty, then that's going to prompt me to pull in. So the visibility of the fueling stations is also important with these types of projects. So that was also something that we had to consider with the site layout. So I'll save it for any specific questions that you had, but I thought it was pretty, I thought it was pretty important just to talk through how we got to the site plan that we had today, just because, again, this has been a long time in the making. We've seen a number of these concept plans. I think this is probably the 20th or 25th concept plan that we've done here. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead, go for it.
This is really for staff, I think. Do we have any other projects in the city that was also, you know, subject to those setback requirements that ended up moving forward? I know you guys are both pretty new, so. Just got here.
Janelle mentioned in her presentation that we have projects that, pardon me, we have projects that request setback waivers, but in this case, not so significant. It's 50 feet?
The required is 50 feet, and the most that I've seen is about 67.
So we've approved waivers that are in excess of that, but this is the, this one would be 180-plus feet, more than double what was previously approved, but so this would be the one development to date in the town center that would not be relatively 434-facing.
Just a few questions. Thank you for your presentation. If you could put the rendering of the store, of the Wawa, is there outdoor seating for people to eat at this Wawa?
So currently, we don't show any outdoor seating here, and that's, you know, speaking with the Wawa representative back here. From a nationwide perspective, they're actually trying to, they've had issues with crime, and I'll say... Yeah, how do you want me to portray this?
Yeah, good evening, board. Scott Carney, actually a resident of Winter Springs. I live at 609 Timberwell Court and have worked with Wawa now for 15 years, have worked on all of the Wawas in the central Florida region. And so I'm super excited about this project, and I think it'd be a good fit for many reasons, but specifically, on this one, we currently don't show outdoor seating due to operational challenges we've had with other stores that have had outdoor seating, with the loitering, the panhandling, other issues that cause safety issues, more or less. In fact, we've got several stores right now where we have actually removed existing outdoor seating. But we would be willing to entertain that for this site, because the way it works with our locations is that they mostly reflect the neighborhood around them. And so here, I don't think there would be some of those challenges that we face in some of the areas in central Florida.
Is there two doors, like the other Wawas, or just one main door on this site?
So this would not be a front-back prototype. This would be just enter, where we're looking right now would be on the top side of the footprint of the store, facing the fuel canopy area. So this would not be a front-back store. So if you're thinking like the one over in Oviedo, where you can go in front and back, we would not have that here. It really comes down to the restrictions that we alluded to earlier. This site is 1.22 acres. That is probably the smallest site I've done in central Florida. We usually need roughly around two acres. In order to fit what we need for our program and our offering, we had to use a unique prototype here that would allow for us to squeeze in, because there's nothing left around that we could bleed into to make up for that space. In fact, that's why we also have looked at the additional parking outside the lease area. But so, in this case, we would be just a front-only entrance for the public.
That's all the questions right now.
I had a question for staff. Could you just refresh me? So the, where are the dumpsters and the loading area? Where is that currently on this rendering?
Right where she's pointing.
Okay. And then what is to the right of the canopy?
So those would be the fuel tanks that are below grade, below the pavement.
Okay. I was just trying to clarify.
Would this be, sorry, is this the smallest Wawa that, is it central Florida area?
It is. I mean, there wouldn't be another one in this area. This would be the only one that we would be able to. It really comes back down to, we want to be here, and if we're going to be here, this is how we fit and still offer what we have on the inside of the store substantially. There'd be some limitations, because it's not as large as our typical prototype, but we are willing to do a different prototype here, because that's the only way we would be able to fit. I should say, too, in addition to that, our standard fuel canopy is, it would be like eight pumps or 16 fueling positions. So this is actually a smaller fuel canopy than what we would typically do, too. It'd actually be the same size as the one that you have over off of, in Oviedo, of a Red Bug, Mitchell Hammock. So that's smaller. We're two pumps smaller here in order to make it fit.
I don't have anything. Tippers and mine, do you have questions?
I have a big, long discussion topic with respect to this Wawa. In Winter Springs, I would say State Road 434 and Tuscaloosa is our main and main. It's the crossing of our two main streets, and over the years, we've worked really hard to get the town center code the way it is. The building setbacks, the other code requirements are done in order to frame the streets properly. Over the course of the years that I've been on the board, there have been a number of parcels that have come in within the town center district, and each one may have included variances or request for variances on the setbacks. And we've gone over those, not only on this side of the street, but on the other side, the Wendy's, the Starbucks, the Chase Bank, each one of those, but they've given a very good reason, based on sidewalk widths, based on the landscaping, but have done their best to conform to the town center code. With this being kind of right on the corner of the main and main, I have a hard time imagining that there's not a concept that could work. There, the city staff does not recommend denials often. I can only think of one other in the seven years that I've been on the board. So it opens my eyes to making sure I understand the reasons why. And as staff knows and as the board knows, one of the first questions I ask whenever it's my turn to speak is, has there been a traffic study done? Has it been approved? As a traffic engineer by profession, that's the first thing I can grab a hold of. Convenience stores are not low-trip generators. They are high-trip generators. And you're looking at one of the, probably one of the main intersections in the city, and to push this through without having a traffic study that's been reviewed and approved, I think you're putting the cart in front of the horse. And I, for one, would like, I would not be recommending denial, but I would be looking for this to be tabled or looking for this to be continued to a future meeting whereby the applicant and the staff can sit down and go through, have the traffic study reviewed and approved, as well as work through some of these eight reasons why staff is recommending denial. If the building could be put further up into the corner, then it would address the pedestrian issue, because you could then bring the pedestrians from both sides to the building. I don't know. I have a, right now, I have a very hard time with understanding why there is this level of resistance in trying to meet the town code, and ultimately, if these conditions are creating this much hardship, then maybe this is the wrong place for the Wawa. That's all I have.
I'll respond to a few things. This is Corey Sittler again. So a few things you mentioned. First thing, the traffic study, that has been, hasn't been approved yet, but we have taken all of the consultants, the reviewing consultants' comments, and have addressed those. That was submitted to staff. I get that the timing didn't unfortunately allow for you to review that prior to this meeting, but those have been addressed and didn't ultimately change the conclusions of the report. So, I mean, that will be provided and should have enough time to be approved before city commission, I'm hoping. But just to speak to that quickly. And then, second, I'll mention about the building setbacks and the overall intent. Part of our thought, if we could go back to the canopy rendering quickly, I think it's important, because on plan view and on paper, this is just a bunch of lines, and it's not entirely, it's not entirely clear of what you're going to be seeing as far as the full picture. So in terms of getting all of the building massing closer to the street and providing that, you know, providing that neighborhood feel, I mean, realistically, it's not going to be a sea of parking until you hit the building. You know, you're going to have a large canopy structure, and albeit, it's, you know, it's not the principal structure on the project, but it's definitely not invisible. So we felt that the canopy, which is 60 feet back from the property line, plus or minus, which is actually consistent with the Fifth Third Bank, we thought that the canopy being set further forward would definitely help with creating that neighborhood feel. So I just wanted to speak to that quickly.
Can I add something? And maybe I'm interpreting this wrong, but when the ordinance was adopted, one of the things is that the store must also be located at the corner of the R2O road intersection, and if the attorney can confirm it, does that not mean that the store is the primary focus in anything, in the gas pump or gas station elements of this project supposed to be secondary? Because if that's the case, one of their responses to one of the comments I added to their site plan application was considering switching the two. And one of the things is the fueling canopy, they said, needs to be located along the frontage streets to allow for visibility of passing customer traffic, and is critical for the success of the project. But from my understanding of what was adopted, it seemed like it's supposed to be the store as the primary focus and not the gas station. But maybe I read, you know, interpreted this incorrectly, but if you can confirm that, that that is the correct interpretation of the ordinance that was adopted.
Would you like me to respond? The use that, so again, this requires conditional use approval. The use that is permitted is a corner store or neighborhood convenience store with gas pumps. So the corner store is, I would say, supposed to be the primary, the primary structure. And the condition upon which this is permitted, there's a footnote in the table, on the use table in the code, and it does say that the store must be located at the corner of an arterial road intersection.
Thank you.
Chair Pro Tem, I do have Li Shu, our professional engineer, to provide some additional information regarding the transportation and utility reviews for the project. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Li Shu. I'm the professional engineer with City of Winter Springs. After reviewing pretty much all the stormwater site engineering, currently, we have traffic and utility comment that's pending until final approved. There has been some communication between the consultant and Mr. Corey with a comment, but those comments have not been fully addressed. I have reviewed the transportation report this morning. My take on is that there are some minor issues there, but there are also some assumptions that need to be corrected, such as the turning calculations, maybe adding another intersections, because per Seminole County Code, require one mile of radius from the project, all the intersection needs to be analyzed. And I'm afraid that maybe a few of them were missed out and has not been fully approved. For utilities, it seems like minor comments to me at this point, but still, that needs to be fully addressed. And there's stormwater, stormwater, so far, it seems like the pond has shown sufficient capacity after removing the retaining wall, and that's not a concern, but it's still pending under review with St. John River Water Management District, I believe, at this moment. So, yeah, so the traffic, in my opinion, is, needs to be approved, and their report from FDOT emphasizing on changing the synchronization timing of the intersection, which is a pretty big deal, in my opinion. So I just wanted to give that information to the board, and thank you. If you have any questions, thank you.
On that note, real quick, I mean, we're more than happy to continue partnering with staff and the consultant on the traffic study and these new comments. To be honest, like Lee mentioned, he's reviewing that this morning. So these are new to me, so they're still fresh. I'm not entirely sure what the comments are specifically, but, I mean, we're happy to continue to work through that. I mean, if it needs to be added as a condition, we're more than happy to put that on there, to make sure that the traffic study is approved before the project can move forward. We have no problem with that, if there's a mechanism like that, that we can add to this project. Perfect, there's already a condition written for that, so we're more than happy.
Ms. Ike, I have a question.
Sure.
So the, in the staff report, the staff recommended denial for... So the, in the staff report, the staff recommended denial for this agenda item. Is there a way forward where, rather than a denial, we can either table it or recommend it to be tabled or continued?
Certainly, the board can decide to continue it. If you do decide to do that, then I would recommend you continue it to a date certain. That way, the advertising doesn't have to all be redone. But that is, you know, within the discretion of the board to determine if you have sufficient information, if that's been presented today or not. And if not, then that is within your discretion to continue it to, again, to a date certain.
Then, in that case, I would like to open discussion with my board, my fellow board members, and just kind of get their thoughts on it. Traffic is always the issue that residents bring up. And not having a traffic study that's been reviewed and approved, that was submitted a week ago in order to make it on to this agenda, I do have a problem with that. I have a problem with the setback of the building, but I'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
So I share those same concerns. I was really concerned, especially with this location and this place I drive through frequently. There's, it's already a very jammed-up intersection, so I have a lot of concerns, even just about the accessibility of the site. It's quite difficult to turn into the site as it is without adding additional trips. So I was very disappointed to see that the study was not included. Concerns about the setback, this is not a pedestrian-friendly site. I'm just not, I appreciate that there have been multiple iterations, but I'm not really clear on why it can't be switched to be more consistent with the rest of the town center. So those are a few of my concerns. And then I also just have a, I can submit this into the record, but it's a concern I have with the spirit of the town center in Winter Springs, where we're striving to be a family-friendly, you know, multi-generational town, that Wawa Corporate does not support changing tables in their restrooms. We reached out to their corporate office. I have a specific comment from them that says, it was my husband who reached out, but he says, "Thank you for the, you know, thank you for the time to contact Wawa. We're sorry to hear that you were disappointed to find we do not have baby changing stations available in the public restrooms within our stores. As you may know, customer and associate safety is our focus. Due to space and safety concerns, we no longer have diaper changing stations available in any of our restrooms. We apologize for any inconvenience this may have caused you during your visit." I can submit this into the record, but I find that extremely disappointing for a corner store location in the City of Winter Springs, that it doesn't flow with the rest of the site. Many other businesses are able to accommodate that.
I think I would echo what others have said so far. My biggest concern is, again, you know, what appears to be an incomplete analysis of traffic, at least at this point. And really, every time I see something come through this intersection, I'm always reminded of the pedestrian traffic, especially from the schools. So, and clearly, you know, Wawa is going to be a magnet for kids moving around this intersection, so. Yeah, so until, you know, the pedestrian issues, which certainly is going to be driven by the continued analysis of the traffic, is where, you know, my greatest concerns are.
Yeah, like my fellow board members have shared, traffic is paramount on this site, as well as the town center spirit and the schools in the area. I share the same concern of the traffic study needing to be completed before we move forward. I do think we should table it and discuss it because I do think this would help complete the town center spirit.
For staff, what is, is there an estimated timeline for the traffic study to be, the review to be completed?
I did speak with our transportation consultant, and they said that they could get it to us next week. So, not too long, but it was forwarded to, we received it Monday, so we forwarded it to them this week and requested an expedited review of sorts.
Correct. Yeah, thank you.
And just to add to that, I did feel to mention about the community workshop that was held on June 30th. Those were the two major concerns that you had brought up, Board Member Rachel, about the heavily trafficked intersection and then the pedestrian safety concerns, and then the students that are coming from the high school, which was also related with the board members of them coming out and going to frequent Wawa. And it was three citizens of the 14 that had brought that up.
Okay. Anything else you want to add, Chairperson Ma?
Um, no. No, I think, I think I said my piece. Thank you.
That's fair. Just want to make sure we don't forget you, since you're on the phone.
If I could ask a quick question to the city attorney. Is it, is it possible for us to request a vote and still move forward with City Commission? Or does that have to be a motion presented by a board member? If that would be our request?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Rather than, rather than table this for another planning and zoning board meeting?
I'm not, I don't know what you mean by that. This, the process is that the planning and zoning board gives the recommendation on the application. So if it's continued, then that is what we will do, is continue the hearing to whatever date is set.
Understood. Just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
I have a question for Chairperson Ma. If we continue this until next month, would that be with the traffic study? Do you feel like that would give us a complete enough picture?
Well, I mean, yes, within, within those next 30 days or however many days, I would hope again that the applicant works with city staff to address as many of those reasons for the staff denial as possible. Paramount to that is, for me, is the traffic study.
Yes.
And making sure that the city or the city's consultant is agreeable to the traffic study and with approvals. And then, secondly, to, and I don't know if 30 days is enough, but, you know, if it's, I understand what the applicant is saying, you know, they've had this property, I think it was eight years, but however long it's taken them to get through to this particular site plan, if, you know, if 30 days is enough for them to try to come up with a way that can address the setbacks, and I don't know if it helps, but what if the building was turned 90 degrees in order to put it up closer to, you know, somehow to, if you're going to come up with a prototype or innovative design, you know, you may need to think more outside the box. So if that is enough time for the applicant to get through those in order to come back in 30 days, or, yeah, whatever, it's going to be September 4th, so 28 days for us to take a look at it again, then, yeah, that's fine. We can do the continuance for, until the next P&amp;Z hearing.
I do just want to point out that the ordinance that allowed for corner stores with gas pumps as a conditional use was only approved in May. So.
Yeah, I remember going through that, and this board had gone through, and I remember the language about, you know, all of the particulars of what this store would include. And I'm like, well, I think it's pretty obvious what's going to go here based on what's being listed. But, so yes, I didn't remember that it was specifically in May, but it was within the past few months.
Go ahead.
Ryan Stoll again. To clarify Corey's question, I think what we're trying to understand is two issues. Actually, I'll bring up the third one, but two issues. Traffic is part of the presentation, and obviously we want to get that wrapped up, which I think could run with the timing of the final approval. Just a suggestion. The site plan modification, I'm not sure what can be done on that, and I'd be glad to have Scott get up here and go through safety concerns and other things that they've experienced in the past. So I think Corey's question relates, and actually I'll address the third one, which is the baby changing stations. I mean, again, that's more of a corporate thing. I understand your concern. The, hopefully that wouldn't be a reason we would get denied, but that could, that could be addressed with Scott afterward. In fact, I encourage you to do that. But I guess the question is, if we, at this point, as the applicant, are not able to make significant, like, building flips and everything else, and if the traffic report does show up here in the coming days, I guess we're trying to understand at what point would a vote actually move forward versus being stuck in this continuance for indefinite amount of time? That was, I guess, to add to his question.
I can speak for myself. One of the reasons I was asking the staff about the timeline to review it was to make a recommendation to align with Kristen's recommendation of issuing a continuance with a date, right? So my guidance to the rest of the board would be with the information we have. If we are going to go the route of the continuance versus the, accepting the staff's recommendation of a denial, that we would continue it until the September planning and zoning meeting.
And I guess my question is, if you guys still say, we still don't like the site plan, we want to go back and revisit, and is there another motion that continues up till October? I'm just trying to understand because, I mean, again, there's been a lot of community, I mean, support behind this, and so I just, I don't want to necessarily let this, we've tried to address the concerns of safety so far, and I guess I just, I, I'm just trying to understand some sort of, where, where does this eventually get voted on?
I will say, I mean, I can certainly lean on Chairperson Ma, as well as he has the longest tenure on the board from all present, but in my two-plus years on the board, this is, be the first continuance I've been a part of. So it is not a common practice for the board to issue a continuance. Anything you would add to that, Chairperson Ma?
Sorry, I was muted. The only thing that I would add is that we're recommending, or if there is a motion for continuance, it's with the intent that you can work with staff to try to address this. It's not to delay any inevitable vote one way or the other. It's to hopefully try to come to some kind of mutually acceptable agreement so that we all can enjoy the, your, the product that you're going to construct here, because right now, as it is, it's, it does not meet what I believe the town center area should be.
Anything to your question?
I think I'd actually probably confuse and prolong the question even more because of working with staff for the next 30 days, I'm not sure what that target looks like. Like, what is the, I mean, we've, we've massaged this multiple ways, putting the building back up to the road such that, I mean, the, I'll address one safety issue. I mean, having the ability for the gas pumps to be, I mean, killed in the event, or shut off in the event of a fire, I mean, is something that's, I mean, really, I mean, we don't want to have that happen here. Having, I mean, activity out front, I mean, is to us is a positive, I mean, especially as it relates to, and Scott can address this with regards to public safety and having the police there. I mean, just to have a visible, visible presence, especially late at night. I mean, so for those reasons, I mean, having the back to, the corner to us wasn't necessarily something that's typically done, just, I mean, forget from the corporate perspective, from a safety perspective. So I guess that's why I'm going back to Kaukuan's question with regards to trying to challenge us to go through. I don't know what that challenge is. And so that's why, I guess, I'm trying to understand if the fact is that, if it's not well-received, then, I mean, I just, I don't want to get stuck for months and months and months for trying to achieve a goal that I'm not sure we're going to get to versus understanding where you all stand and us moving forward and dealing with it. So that's, that was my question, just to.
And I understand, I understand your point. With, just my two cents, with respect to the safety, you brought up something with respect to the fire on the, at the gas pumps. I would imagine an emergency vehicle that's located next to the driveway where the gas pumps would be, if the location were flipped, would be more convenient for the gas, for the fire truck to put out the fire than having to go past the building to get to the gas canopy. But you may disagree. But to your point about the continuance and not having a definitive answer, we have, in the past, worked with staff and to understand the level of involvement that the applicant has gone through to try to meet certain requirements. And in the past, I've had staff, I don't think anybody that's currently here, but I've had staff come up and say, you know, we've worked with this applicant for a couple months now. They have shown us the reasons why we, they cannot get it to work for, you know, whether it's setbacks, whether it's, I don't know, landscaping, stormwater, whatever the case may be, that the variance is being requested, or the exception, rather. And then it's presented to us as, as staff has, has worked with the client, this is the best that, in our opinion, this is the best that they can do on this site. And then, at that point, yeah, certainly, we can, we vote on it. And then, that's that. It's not like we're, we're trying to just keep delaying it until we get the preferred answer that we want. So I don't know if that answers your question, but right now, it doesn't sound like, from the staff report, that there has been much of an effort to try to meet halfway, especially when there are those eight points that lead to the staff's recommendation for denial.
To address your first comment, I mean, a front door facing 434 and the gas pumps being in the rear, the comment we were trying to make before was, from a safety perspective, I mean, to have somebody walk out and walk around the backside of the building to pump gas was a reason for concern. So I don't know if that helps paint a better picture of.
Does the door have to face 434, though? Why couldn't the door face the other way and just have the facade on the 434 side?
To put the dumpsters facing 434?
No. No, I wouldn't put the dumpsters on 434, but.
That's why we.
On the side of the building.
Facing Tuscaloosa? That's, I guess, why, that's why, that was why we're trying to follow, I guess, the, that's the purpose of the conversation. We're kind of saying like, just. We're kind of saying like, just, you want to point to that?
Do you want the elevations or to point towards elevations?
Cockwan, are you able to see this?
I, it's on about a 20-second delay, but I do have the presentation up if you tell me which slide to look at.
Slide is...
So I have the elevations up. The first of the two elevation slides show the front and the back, and then the second one shows the two sides.
Correct.
That's correct. So the concern was, if you can go up one, there you go. Rear, I mean, that to us is not conducive to facing 434 or Tuscaloosa, so we were, that was the reason we didn't want to flip anything, so...
We recently had a Chick-fil-A that came in, and I think maybe talk it over with your architects to see what can be done, but you can make a facade on that back that would be attractive enough to put and face 434, to just show the elevation and say, see, this is why it doesn't work. I don't know that that's the final answer.
Okay. You want to get up here? This is the main corporate prototype.
So again, with this prototype, and these elevations really demonstrated that the public entrance is really below the tower feature on the front elevation, and the doors are on the side of that tower feature. There is no public access on the rear feature, on the rear facade that is getting into back a store. And that's where we're bringing garbage out, and we're, we don't want people there, put it that way. So, and getting back to, if you could go back to the site plan too, the plan view? I just highlight something, too. So operationally, too, what's very important for us is that we have to have, our associates have visual on what's happening in the fuel canopy, and with our glass facade on our primary frontage, they can maintain that visibility for safety and security and other purposes. Whereas if we have it, you know, if you flip it 180 degrees with a layout, we went, well, if we moved it up so that the primary, I should say, public access is up on 434, we would have zero visibility. You can do some things with cameras, but it's not the same as having the associate at the register who's got the emergency shut-off button that can hit that right away if there's a problem.
And I think that's, that's not what we're saying, though. We're saying to, so...
Correct.
That we're proposing to flip, if you flipped it, you flipped the whole site 180 degrees, so that the rear of the store would face 434 with an improved facade, similar to other applicants that we've seen along the town center, including, Chairperson Ma referenced, a Chick-fil-A that they requested a waiver to flip and not have the front of the building face 434, but their facade was appealing.
It would be all faux, that is true.
Correct.
And so it would give the impression of a storefront.
Correct.
But what I want to highlight, too, specifically with the site plan, is that the fuel canopy itself, I can't read the numbers exactly, but I want to say that the square footage of the fuel canopy is like 5,800 square feet.
Oh, 5,900.
903.
How many?
5,903.
903.
5,900 square feet. And so the square footage of the proposed building footprint, too, is a little over 4,700 square feet. So the larger footprint with this layout is actually closer to 434. So going back to what Cory was saying earlier, the massing is really with the fuel canopy, and that's set back 60 feet, I think, is what you calculated, which was, you can see the top edge of the fuel canopy roofline is pretty much in line with the Fifth Third Bank to the west. That is the bigger structure on this layout. It's not the store. By about 1,200 square feet more, plus or minus.
All right. Are there any other points of discussion from the board that we want to have?
Before you have any, before you make any motions, if that's what you're inclined to do, I would suggest that you open it up for other public comment first.
Yes, sorry, I was getting ready to do that.
Okay, perfect.
So I just wanted to make sure the board had all their thoughts out. Okay. Any public comment?
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village. I went to the meeting that they held, and that was a concern of people is, and I personally, my husband, who never goes to the meetings, went, and that was the concern was with, what was the traffic going to be like? Because we go around that corner, okay? We live in the Winter Springs Village, come out, it is horrendous sometimes, okay? If somebody stops at Aldi and is not really sure if they're going to turn or not, it really makes a problem. So I agree with the traffic study, you do need to know that. However, I did, I have, in the past, built houses, and there are parts of lands that are shaped strange and peculiar. But the way you, I said to them, look, I didn't want a gas station, but hey, you got to live with it, okay? But make it look like it's out of Disney World, because that is our town center. And if you have to do the fake back, because that's what they do, like a set, that's what you do, to make it look, I have to say, the Wawa doesn't look like something out of a Disney World production. And I know what looks across the street, and not that the place with the clock looks so great sometimes, but I'm just saying, it does, they made McDonald's change the facade of that, okay? So I say, you need to make it look like something worthwhile, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
Hi, Victoria Bruce, 129 Cherry Creek Circle, Winter Springs. Couple things, was unclear why EVs weren't discussed. In addition, regarding these setbacks, I'm confused about that as well. I understand that there is a requirement, but it seems to me, maybe I'm just misunderstanding, that when you say exceeds the required setback, it's going to be further away from the, from the street rather than closer? And so I don't see that as an issue at all. And then, and I don't understand why it would be an issue if it's, it's further set back from the road. I mean, if they were trying to get closer to the road, I totally understand that being an issue, but to be farther away from the road, I don't know why that's a problem. And then there's also an existing signage with room for more properties, and I don't, I think that this would probably be the last, so I'm not sure what that signage would have over by the bank. There's two more spots for signage, so maybe something needs to be added for that. But my two main points are setbacks, don't understand the issue, and EVs, why they're not being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? We can't respond to the public comment.
That's up to the board, whether you would like to.
Would we like to have the applicant respond to the public comment?
Oh, by all means.
Okay. Sounds great.
Ryan Stoll again. With regards to the EVs, nobody's asked. We are more than willing to offer that. I think it's known that Wawa has EV charging stations, primarily Tesla's charging stations. Again, going back to the design, the only place to put them, and we lost our site plan, sorry, is fronting Tuscaloosa, and it was unanimously agreed, including by Wawa, that that would not be the attractive place to line up a bunch of Tesla charging stations. There's really no other place within the parcel that would allow such a area for charging stations. So in some open conversations, we talked about doing a corral in the middle of the shopping center that would be available to all the public and not just necessarily be dedicated to Wawa. Whenever the time is right, when everybody, anybody asks for it, we are willing to get into more detail and offer that, and even have had conversations with the specific group who would actually provide those. So that would be something that, we've actually spoken with all the retailers, they've all been supportive of it, but if we don't have a vote, we'll never get there, so...
So at this point, I would entertain a motion from the board. I, well, in the spirit of Chairperson Ma, I have been taking notes, and I have seen two, two potential paths forward. We can vote to continue this topic until the September meeting, to give staff an opportunity, staff and the applicant, an opportunity to reach an approval with the traffic impact study, is one option. The second option I'm seeing is to either accept or reject the staff's recommendation, or accept the staff's recommendation of denial of the application. So those would be the two that I'm, that I'm hearing.
Ms. Ike, a question, please. If there was a motion made to continue it up to, let's say, 60 days, and the applicant and the city, city staff had, came to an agreement with the applicant within 30, is that okay? Or is it, does it, is the 60 days, or whatever the date certain is, is the, is when we would hear it again?
You would hear it again on the date that you set in your motion.
I see.
To do otherwise would mean that we would have to re-advertise the hearing. So, I mean, I suppose it's possible that you could have an earlier hearing, but again, the purpose is to, is to preserve the advertising, so...
All right. Question for staff, then. In order for all of the advertising, as well as to have your agenda ready for September 4th, what date would that, would the applicant need to have everything in?
Cheryl Enroll, Director of Community Development. The September 4th meeting, just one moment. The agenda would be published on the 28th, and we would need to send out the ads no later than the 25th postmark, and that would mean we would have to have the staff report completed before that. Also wanted to add that the board also has the option to do a special meeting outside of the regularly scheduled date, if that serves your purpose.
So, yeah, as I was thinking about all of those deadlines and rolling things back, I figured that we, there's only a couple weeks before the applicant would need to have everything prepared and submitted to the city. So I would like the board members to consider either A, a special meeting that is 45 days out, so in between our two normal meetings, or push it to October in order to give applicant and city enough time, because right now, it, even though we say it's going to be 28 days from now, the reality is everything would need to be done in probably 14 days or less.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So our October meeting is October the 2nd, for reference. Unless you guys would like to entertain a special meeting in mid-September.
The, can we, like, recess for like three minutes so we can have a conversation? We're trying to understand, like, we don't want to miss stuff here, and like, now talking about October is, is, I'm worried we're going to lose Wawa, guys. So I'm just, can we just, like, pause for three minutes to make sure that what's voted on doesn't jeopardize everything we've done? We just need to understand what is being voted on, the implications it's going to have. I mean, can you just, like, take a quick minute before you make a motion?
Sure.
Is there consensus on the board to take a five-minute recess?
Yes.
I'm in agreement with that, sure.
Yeah, we're good for a five-minute, or let's do a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Do I need to hit the gavel? Where am I reset?
Yeah, there's one in the back, or there's one right in the lobby. Whichever one. All right, we are over our proposed five-minute recess, so I would like to call us back to order.
Um, I, I, yes, I think so, let me double check.
Okay. Okay. Understood. So, a question for the board before we entertain a motion. Um, there's, if we were to do a continuance, the applicant and staff would be amenable to a September eleventh meeting? Would there be enough for a quorum among the fellow, among my fellow board members? I am available that date.
I am available that date.
I too am available that date.
I'm available, September eleventh.
So, that would be enough for a quorum? Should we make a motion to continue this topic to that date? And re-review it at that time with the completed traffic study?
So, and did the appropriate language would be to postpone to a date certain, which is September eleventh at five-thirty PM in the City Hall chambers? City Commission chambers, excuse me.
All right, so we have, it sounds like that option, or the option to accept staff's recommendations would be the two potential motions. So, I can entertain a motion from the board at this time.
I'll make a motion to continue, uh, this agenda item until, until date certain, September eleventh at five-thirty.
In the chambers, perhaps? In the City Commission chambers, yes.
In the City Commission chambers, thank you.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Let me do a quick roll call. Chairperson Ma?
Aye.
Board member Hood?
Aye.
Board member Macon?
Aye.
Board member Halal?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item four oh two, Winter Springs Marketplace, Additional Parking Site Final Engineering and Development Agreement. Is there a presentation by staff? Yes, give me one second.
Oh, yes.
No, that's the wrong one, yeah. I apologize, got everything mixed up, trying to go back and forth.
Right.
This is, uh, this is part two of, uh, our, of, uh,
the Winter Springs Marketplace presentations for tonight. Um, as was mentioned previously by the applicant, this is related to the, uh, additional parking. Okay. There we go. Uh, again, same site location, they actually had their, uh, pre-application meeting and their community meeting at the same time as the Wawa, since these projects were, uh, linked together. And you can see here, this is our overview. Um, the X towards the bottom is where the parking will be going. The X towards the top is the entrance off of Robert's Family Lane. And, so these are the two pages of site plan side by side. You saw earlier a larger, uh, overview of the site with these included. So, this is a, you know, an entrance and exit out of, coming off of Robert's Family Lane on the left. And the parking spaces, uh, that will be added both for customers and for Wawa staff on the right. And our proposed conditions here, again, the execution of the development agreement. Um, the construction on site not, shall not begin until the stormwater permit from Saint John's River Water Management District is approved. That's related to the, uh, to the pond that exists there in the Winter Springs Marketplace. And lastly, that all grass on the property being Bahia grass and no Saint Augustine grass or grass types with low drought tolerance. Right, and again, I, just as a note, this isn't a proposed condition, but a right-of-way permit for the work on Robert's Family Lane would be required. No, pressing the button. All right, anyway, any questions from the board?
There you go, it just, it caught up with you. Maybe.
Oh, there we are.
All right. Any questions from the board?
So, we, we can't really do anything with this, can we? I mean, until we deal with
You...
any changes to the plan, so...
No, I, I mean, I think that you could, um, what is being proposed in this application is only, I think, ten additional parking spaces?
Correct.
And, um, the revision to the access on Robert's Family Lane. That could be built irrespective of whether Wawa or any other development, um, was happening on the, on the corner parcel. So, it, you know, I think the board could move forward with hearing this this evening. Um, I'm not sure if the applicant desires that or wants it to be heard, um, with the other, the Wawa item in September.
Um, I think it would make more sense to have this follow the same line as the Wawa application. So, we would be okay with continuing this to the September eleventh meeting.
Okay.
Staff wouldn't have any objection to that.
Okay. All right. Um, is there additional discussion or questions from the board? I, I think it makes sense to hear these together. Um, Chairperson Ma, do you have any thoughts or comments, questions?
Uh, no, not for me, thank you.
Before we, before I call for motion, is there any public comment on this agenda item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion from the board.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone item four oh two, Winter Springs Marketplace Additional Parking Site Final Engineering and Development Agreement until September eleventh at five-thirty PM at City Hall.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, I spoke fast, sorry.
All righty, Chairperson Ma?
Aye.
Board member Hood?
Aye.
Board member Macon?
Aye.
Board member Halal?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Um, moving on to the regular agenda, um, reports from the board. I'll start with, uh, Chairperson Ma on the phone.
Uh, nothing from me, thank you.
Board member Halal?
Um, just, I, I was excited to hear about the, uh, the EV charging. I think I brought that up at one of the past meetings. And I think that's a great opportunity to increase the EV charging, um, availability within the city. If that is something we can entertain, that, that's exciting and, and nice to hear that all the businesses there are kind of in favor of that, so, that's all I have.
Board member Macon?
Nothing from me this evening. Glad to be here.
Thank you, it's bad, you were, the traffic was slightly in your favor.
I got here safely.
Yes. Um, nothing from me as well. Um, so I'll open it up for a final round of public input. Hearing and seeing none, um, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
See ya.
Yeah.